I'd like to call the committee to order. Start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the right, for which this is a motion, the ground, is of liberty to justice.
Welcome everyone to the Victor's zoning board of appeals. First on board, I would like to get a motion for approval of the June 21st, 2022 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Fred.
I'll second it.
Thank you Donna. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So before we begin with our hearing, reminding everyone where the public exits are off to the side, out in the back, restrooms are in the vestibule area. Be sure to sign on the attendance sheet if you would be so kind. Also, there are business cards at the back of the table. Please pick one up if you'd like and leave your number if you want to be contacted. Also, the back of the table, there is the proposed resolutions. If you would, please turn off or silence your cell phones. And also, please take all conversations out in the hallway. As far as any of the applicants when they present their case, for those who haven't been here before, what we like to do is certainly, we would take a look at any exhibits that we have in front of us. If you have extra exhibits that you want, that you haven't presented already, we can take a look at them. Whether it be new or old exhibits, if you're referring to the exhibits, do your very best to refer to compass point directions. Instead of saying, well, if you see over here, see over there, because Amber over here is recording and then she's going to make minutes like you've just heard, we need approval. It's going to make the minutes much clearer if you use descriptive words other than here and there. North, south, east and west is helpful. Structures, if you can point to them and tell us what you're talking about, neighbors, whatnot. So hopefully that will help us all out. Also during your application and presentation, the board does its very best not to talk over or talk on top of the applicant's presentation, vice versa. If you would wait for each other to stop talking, this way, the record can be as clear as possible and Amber again can figure out who's saying what, where and when. So that creates a good record. With that, then we can move forward. We have our town historian here. I'd like to say a few words.
I would, thank you. So good evening. Being the town historian for 32 years, I know, it's a long time. I've seen some major changes in Victor, as well as probably some of you. Barns are part of our history and because we were an agrarian community, as we get going along with more development, of course, our agrarian, our agricultural community is diminishing. And we need to preserve some of these barns. About 20 years ago, we did a documentation, volunteers went out and surveyed the barns that were there. There were about, there were 173 at that time. Today, we have about 120. So that's a reduction of 30% in 20 years. With the town becoming more suburban, old wooden barns are not needed anymore. And they're very expensive to retain. Some barns however have been restored, like the Cost Barn on Dryer Road, another was turned into a home, Strong Road Barn. And another one, the Hawks Barn, which was on Victor-Egypt Road, was demolished. But the Harley School bought it and they took it down board by board and then put it up on their campus because they were adding another building and they had originally started as a barn. So they wanted a barn to put their new, I think their sustainability school in. They didn't use the whole barn because it wasn't all able to be kept, but they did preserve as much of it as they could. Are all Victor's barns usable, preservable? Absolutely not. As farms decline, so will the need for these barns. They've sheltered animals, crops and agricultural machinery. Today, they might just be large storage sheds. Our agrarian history in Victor has changed tremendously over the last few decades and now we are a suburban community with our land being used for many housing developments, retail stores and commercial building. As I said, we documented the barns about 20 years ago. We took pictures and we did a little history of each barn. So what are we doing now? Because of the growth and because most barns now that are left are in large parcels and are probably going to be, if not have already been bought by developers. So I've hired the Landmark Society of Western New York to do an historic resource inventory of the remaining barns. The Landmark Society already did, and I'm sure you, I hope you know, an inventory of the historic structures, buildings in our town that are 50 years and older. And the goal of this barns inventory is to objectively document the condition of the barns and classify them, just like we did the historic buildings. Are they high importance? Are they medium? Or are they low importance? This will take in the condition of the barn at the time and give the planning and the zoning boards an independent assessment of the barn and it should help you with your decision making. As a community, we want to encourage preservation, which includes open space and also our significant agrarian piece structure that's left, which is the barn. So I come to you tonight just to give you that information because we did it with the historic buildings because we were finding that they were being demolished and we didn't have any objective criteria with which your board and the planning board and even the town board could make any kind of an objective decision. So if you have any questions for me, I'd gladly try to answer.
When the farms were operating, they had outbuildings.
Right. That will also be part of this survey. Right.
What would you like the zoning board to do?
When we are done with this inventory, I would like you to, when an applicant comes to you, and usually it's to demolish a barn, and I do have some, I can recommend to you and to the planning board, yes, do it, or no, don't. And it's never been a problem. However, when Valentine Meadows Development came up and the, I believe the applicant wants, wanted to keep the barn and it's a pretty good, it's in pretty good shape, that you would have this documentation of any kind of a barn that an applicant would want to keep and you could say to them, okay, here it is on this list, according to the Landmark Society, and there's lots of parameters that they, that they will look at. This building's of high importance and I hope that encourages you to preserve that barn. If it's of low importance, you know, we, we have our battles and we have our battles and low importance is not a barn that you probably, structurally, you don't want to keep. It's probably the ones that are in the middle that are going to be the ones that you have to really look at and decide.
Well, if the zoning board works cooperatively with you, we get the survey and it gets updated, it's on our radar.
Yep.
Certainly, it would help us if you see something on the agenda.
Yep.
Come on in and give us a heads up and we will certainly welcome any input.
I know you will.
Anybody else has. Hopefully, we, nothing falls through the cracks that, you know, it's a public hearing and anybody that has input, we welcome that and especially you on the barns.
Thank you.
Love to hear from you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have questions, comments, concerns?
I've got a question. Is there, is it available, obviously easily available to the public, meaning we've had situations like Mark's Pizzeria, I think was a good one, right?
Yeah.
Where they, they buy the parcels and they buy the land already and then they come in front of us.
And when you say, uh, this is a little problem here. It should be on the, what was, Suzie, is it on the website? Our historic resource inventory? Yeah.
Is there a way to make it more, I guess, obvious to people or that, that are buying these properties and parcels that have existing barns on them? I don't know how it can be integrated into, into the, the recording process or just the, so they know, hey, by the way, there's this on the property and here's where it's rated in the comprehensive plan or the...
Is there something on the application process?
I mean, not here, I'm saying, and just the buying the land.
Oh, well, I'll talk with Suzie and she and I'll work on seeing if we can make it more visible to somebody. Usually when somebody's buying even like in this, like an old home and a real estate agent will call me and say, what, what's, you know, it's not the land usually and it's not commercial usually, it's, it's a resident and it's usually a real estate agent. But we'll, we'll work on that. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, just to limit the number of people that come in that have already bought it, already have, and I actually think with Mark's Pizzeria, they were trying to reuse the barn.
They were.
And it got to the point where it was like, we've got to...
And that's kind of why you need this inventory from an entity that does this all the time and that they are, they'll be objective.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Let's see, Auction Direct is tabled until July 18th. Next application is Cliff Anderson.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Everybody enjoy the holiday?
Yes.
Wonderful. You know, we're seeking a variance here, a user variance for 6756 County Route 41. You know, the property itself is, is fairly large. It's the only building there within 500 feet either way and across the street as well. You know, when I went into the property to rehab the property, the property was already set up for a three unit, you know? Unbeknownst to the board and its members, you know, it does have three workable utilities in there, you know, separated. And going through the building itself, it was clearly separated out entirely. I mean, you can see here, this is, I'm going to say this is the south facing side, left side, that's an entrance point right there that you guys can see. And there's another one right to the right of that and right on the right side of the building, there's a third one in the back there as well. There are some structural issues that we need to address in order to rehab the property, you know, and we would love to, you know, keep, keep this property and move forward with it, you know? It's really going to be at the determination of the board and its members, but you know, when we bought the property, the property was purchased as a two family, we kind of oversaw that and seeing the three meters there, seeing the three utility services in the building, you know, and it was purchased. And I mean, it'd be great to, to do that, you know? I understand that it's our burden to carry, you know, but we're just seeking the user variance approval to turn this into an actual three family.
Well done?
Yes.
Okay. You're going to have time to comment, so this is, so certainly, I think the board understands as far as the code goes, it's a proposed three family dwelling, but it's not permitted in an R2. Correct?
Understood.
And the information that we have so far, as far as this history of it, it seems that it's difficult, how did it get that way? Is it a pre-existing condition? That is a bit of a, we'll call it a wild card for now and not being able to pin that down. The other piece, county planning board has to take a look at it by law and give us their comments on what they think as far as whether or not a use variance is appropriate here. It's important to determine and understand that a use variance is different than an area variance. An area variance is arguably easier to get than a use variance. There are more hurdles with the use variance. And if you haven't looked at it, as far as the criteria, I urge you to do that because you're going to have some time. County Planning Board hasn't given us their comments yet, so there's some time here.
Sure.
Couple of pieces that are important here are, as far as the use variance go, is the financial piece. In a nutshell is, you have to be able to prove to the board that you can't use the property as it exists, as the code allows you to use it. In other words, your argument is like, yeah, I got this piece of property, but I can't use it. I can't use it, not necessarily how I want it, but as far as how the code allows you to use it. So it's an R2, you can have two families in there, but not three. I'm not saying this is a no, I'm just, it's a hurdle.
Yeah, I got you.
If you need some help, I urge you, go seek legal counsel, do research. It's, it's a heavy, heavy burden for a zoning board to grant a use variance. Okay?
Okay.
So far, so good?
So far, so good.
Okay, good. So with that, we'll take some questions from the board and you respond accordingly.
Sure.
Fred, do you have any questions?
Isn't this the house that Redmond was proposing to tear down a year or two ago?
I don't know. Do you know anything about that, Adam?
No.
I don't think there's much rental property, any rental property in that area. And I'd hate to be the one that allows three to break, to break the barrier for other places. Because what one person can do, so can somebody else.
Right, and that's where it's...
And that's a hurdle for me, right there.
Right, that's, that would potentially change the character of the neighborhood. You can have, I know there's a question, you have two, but the argument that, well gee, there's already three electrical boxes in there, has some weight, but not enough, I think, to get over that hurdle, say, gee, I, I can't get the return that I need from that piece of property unless it's a three rental unit. You'd have to show, if you do your research, you have to show the financials behind it that it just won't work with what the code allows me to do with it.
Understood.
All right? Again, not saying no, I'm just telling you what the hurdle is, what the, what your proof to the board has to show, most of the time it's financials. The, this is what we have, this is what the return is now, it's not working, we need to make it to go to three, here's why.
Sure, sure.
That's why I encourage you to do a lot of research on how is a use variance granted? And if it gets to be overwhelming or you just get in the weeds, like I can't figure it out, go seek legal counsel, someone that knows municipal law, knows how variances, specifically how are use variances granted or denied? You know, what is that criteria that you have to get through? Okay? Matt, questions?
Um, yeah, it's a little bit, the, obviously you bought the property and your current plan is that it was going to be a two-family home, rental property, right? And then you got, kind of got into it and hey, lo and behold, it's kind of separated into three. Is it, have you thought about, well, look, you know, the third unit, is there, do you have to do, do you have to redo the whole building or can you have the, is the third unit federated enough to be able to say, let's try to make the two-family unit work, collect the data, see how it all works? If I need the third unit because now I'm in a financial hardship situation to help you with the criteria, then you've got the data and the history to be able to say, hey, look, I've tried to, tried to work within the means of the code. I've got this third unit, I've got to put, you know, X amount of dollars into it, but it would, it would make the business plan more solvent. Is it...
Yeah, so Matt, that is, I mean, great point, you know, I mean, it's old school building, you know, there's multiple outcrops on this building that have been added on over the years since it, the original building was there. You know, there is a major structural issue with the foundation on the back portion where the, the single unit was and that entire area actually has to be repointed, you know? I've gone through the hardship of, of talking to the code officers here and, and going through that, they've looked at it, you know? We've come up and we've actually delegated dollars to a structural engineer to come in, outline what the proposed fix to the property would be, you know, added on to the compiled, you know, price of what the property was and what it's going to cost us to actually rehabilitate the project. I mean, it certainly, I mean, it'd be great to move forward the project and keep this piece of history in the town, but I can almost be certain that without it being a third unit in there, the hardship's going to be too great and it's going to, not going to be able to be moved forward with, you know? You know, and that, like I said, you know, it's a hardship that we would have to endure, but you know, we'd love to be able to move forward and grow with the community, you know?
Sure.
I think Matt's point is, is well taken that that potentially could be one of the financials that you could show us and say, it can't be, or it's extremely difficult to turn this from a three to a two. Not just, I'm not saying you're lying, but having, whether it be an engineer or somebody saying, here's what it's going to cost to turn the three to a two. That is an element of financials on why, will or won't work.
Yep.
Okay?
And certainly things that, I don't think you can blame the foundation as something that's a hardship that you created.
No, yeah.
So, and like Mike, Mike had said, you know, we'd recommend you either seek counsel or go and kind of do, do the homework and understand what is a, what are the, the four criteria, how do they have to be met? I think you, you know, my opinion is, you know, you probably, probably have a reasonable case, you know, for, for a use variance. I, I drive by that house quite a bit, you've done a lot of great things, you couldn't even see the house, right? With the, the trees, I think, in front of it, it was set back and so I've, I've watched the, you know, the property improve over, over the months that you've been working on it, as I drive by, drive down Brace Road on the way to Canadaigua. So, you know, whether it would be within the character of the neighborhood, you know, it's next to a golf course, it's not in a, in a subdivision, so to speak, you know, there are other single-family homes, but there's, you know, larger homes, there's a, like a farm on the opposite corner. So like, you know, again, I'm open to you making that case that it would be able to fit, I think it, you know, just to be able to understand the, the project as a whole and kind of the hardship that you've run into and how the third unit would be able to close the, close the gap to keep it going.
Sure.
So, question really, if town assessment records reflect that there's two kitchens, two bathrooms, five bedrooms there, is there more than that within that house?
So, yeah, there, there is and was three whole kitchens in, in that, three whole bathrooms in that, absolutely. We can document that, pardon?
I'm sorry.
And we can document that and show, show proofs of that. You know, unfortunately, the, the demo on the inside of the building itself has been almost completely gutted, but the, all the plumbing installations and stuff are still there that would show that, hey, there was a shower there, hey, there is a toiletry here, vanity, whatnot, kitchen installations and stuff, you know? So we can definitely show that, that it was utilized as a three unit for some time. It certainly was.
But it's not there any longer?
You're not going to see the full kitchens in there, you're going to see the, the utilities, utilities where the, the hookups were. So like, I mean, again, in the project, as the project was progressing, you know, it was like completely pull everything out, put all brand new in, give the entire property a facelift and, you know, fix the home on the outside as well, so.
Was it gutted before you purchased it?
No, it wasn't entirely gutted before I purchased it.
So you worked on gutting some of it?
Yeah, so some of the demolition got taken care of and some of the, some of the structural issues on the building were getting taken care of along with that. And come to find out, you know, we need to, need to get the approvals for the three unit in order to move forward the project, so.
I'm just interested to see how fixing it up as a two unit, as what originally was versus the three unit, how much you'd actually gain in that? So I guess I'm interested when you come back to the board.
Okay. So would you be open if Adam or another code enforcement officer was amenable to it to make an appointment, have him take a look at it, to get his eyes on it, to say, oh, I can see how there were three kitchens here, there were however many, just trying to distinguish that not just three electrical units, but something a little more on, lack of a better term, the guts of the building inside that, yeah, there were in fact three kitchens here or, you know, however many...
I'm stopping you. I have pictures.
Oh, come on up, we can't hear you when you do that. And tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Ezra Karaka.
Okay.
I think I have pictures of the three kitchens, you know, before we demolished, you know, took all them, pulled them down, so.
Pictures would certainly help, but Anna, would you be, I know, with all your spare time, just to get your eyes on it so that you can say, it's a court enforcement officer, I can see it, there were three kitchens here that...
Yes, I can also, Rick, Rick McGrane walked through the house already with this gentleman, so I can consult with him or we can make an appointment to go back through.
Yeah, just, yeah, something that we can have it as a fact, as our fact finding mission continues, that there were, even though the history records seem to be gray, that could help us on how many kitchens were in there.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to rely on photos as well because the demolition began without the permit, so we didn't find out they were demoing it until we saw, you know, material being delivered, so.
Good, yeah, so photographs would help, sooner the better and we can, we'll take as many as we can look at, more the better. Donna, questions?
I have a couple. First one is to Adam, do, on this picture, they're having three doors, you only have to have one door per unit for an exit, or how does that work? You're okay with, that's okay?
Yes, I guess there's not a basement.
Okay, and do these, if we were to grant it, do, because they're demolishing it, it's not a new build, would it have to have a firewall between any of these or?
Yeah, all the current codes are going to have to be applied regardless, it was never permitted as a three unit dwelling.
Sure.
So it's being permitted 2022, it, the entire building's going to need to meet current building codes.
And that's, and that's everything, I mean, I've got, just got, the clarification question really is, anything that's pre-existing that's there that's not being like tear, torn down, would that fall into that same criteria, so we'd have to? Like, because there are some structural walls, like around the outside of the building that I would patch, you know, and go over, you know? And I don't, I mean, tearing them all down to the bare, bare...
Nothing says that you have to take it down, you just have to make it comply with code. And because the record doesn't show even a, we don't have even a certificate of occupancy to show it as a two-family dwelling, so that's where the problem lies. It's right now, the only certificate of occupancy for that building is a single-family home. You're going to turn it, whether you, you get approved or denied for three, you decide to move forward with two, it's now being newly permitted and will need to meet current code.
Understood.
Okay.
And I have a comment that I look to purchase that house and there was three kitchens in it, I will vouch for that.
Old English farm, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
There was three.
Yeah.
I think it would be better. Need a determination on that.
It wasn't a very big kitchen, but it was there.
Question, how, what are the, what would be the size of the three units?
There'd be, so square footage wise, there'd be a single unit, that'd be like a loft studio, it'd be actually be a single, a single apartment, then there would be...
So is this, what's like square footage?
Square footage is about, I would say, 850 to 950 square feet, possibly up to 1,000, you know, 1,000, maybe 1,100, you know, I'd have to really go through and see exactly what that is, but I would say anywhere between 850 and 1,100 square foot would be that one unit. And then the two other units would be somewhere in the ballpark of, I want to say, 1,300 square foot roughly, you know? That's just kind of a ballpark for you, you know? I mean, they are upper and lower, you know, floors to that, so, you know?
By look... By looking at fuse box, that circuit breaker panel, would you say there were two that looked built in, then there was a third one without a cover and looked like it had been added? So.
So I, I could.
Would you say the third one got put in after the first two?
I can, I can attest to that there is definitely two panel boxes there, there's another, the, one of the two panel boxes feeds a sub-panel, that sub-panel runs to the, the unit, runs up to the meter and runs back to the, the back unit there, would be the single, single.
This is the third.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, that, that panel box there for that sub-panel is, is quite old, it's definitely more than 20 years old, you know?
The, the one thing that I think would be interesting to see is the, obviously it's a home with three potentially different families or residents and is probably also relatively tight. It would be interesting to know what, or have the data for, what would the whole thing rent as a, you know, a 20, I don't know, a 2,200 square foot single and then another 1,000 square foot single versus three? You know what I mean? Like if you, if you kept it with the code and you recaptured that third apartment or loft area, you know, as, as part of one of the units, obviously you're going to get more rent because it's more square footage versus if you had three apartments in there, you know, what, what would that really sell for? Or not sell for, but what would that rent for? So having that information.
Like looking for a monthly, you're thinking?
Looking for a monthly, because I.
I could, I could cer, I'm sorry, Matt, but I, I think I can answer that question for you. It has the potential to earn, you know, up to 2,000, maybe $2,400 monthly.
Per unit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if there's a, in, in whatever day you present will be fine, but I, I, it'll be interesting because if you're going to pay that kind of money for it, you're going to have two other families or two other individuals living with you, I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure that's.
Are you saying 2,400 per unit?
Per unit.
No, I think that the two, the two fam, the two, two units in the front would probably be somewhere around, you know, $2,200 a month, and I think that third unit.
Each?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And from what I, I'm hearing, what you're saying is, there's some guessing going on.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a definite what it'd be rented out for.
So, one of the comparisons that you have with an area variance and a use variance, area variance, there's a number of criteria. Not having one of those in your favor, let's say the area variance is or is not substantial. If you don't meet that criteria with an area variance, doesn't mean that you haven't met the other four, it's, it's a balancing act with all those criteria. Use variance, it's all or nothing. You miss one, you're out. So think of it like a recipe. And the simple example I can think of is, you're making a cake and the cake says, you need three eggs. You open the fridge, there's not any eggs, you're not making a cake. As bad as you want it, you've got to have all these criteria. So you've got to have your homework done, you've got to have those numbers locked in, this is what it's going to rent for, here's how I know that because this place rented for that, or give us some hard numbers so that we can get our teeth into it and figure it out. The more you make a guess at it, the weaker your case is going to get.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of three families sharing one yard, you know, what, that has to have some diminish in value on the other two units. I just, again, just think about it, something to, I would, I think, just try to address and like Mike said, you know, you have to come up with the, with the data to kind of prove that here's what we would get, you know, with two and here's with three. And I don't just think it's, you know, one plus one plus one equals three. To me, it's like one plus one plus one's going to equal like two and a half or two and a quarter because you're, having the third unit is probably going to also diminish what you'll get on the first two, in my opinion, right now, but it'd be great to see the, the data. But that's kind of the, the questions that, you know, we'd like to get answered, I think, as part of the, just the, the business plan and, and what you want to do with the home.
Understood.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, sorry, I went to ask the code enforcement, when you go to three, does that bring in the sprinkler system?
I would have to verify, but it's more likely than not.
I think it does, so. Talk to him about sprinkler systems because that, that might change your mind quickly too.
Sure.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
We understand and respect, you know, your decision, whatever it is, as an investment, you know, we need to see if it's going to be worth it for us to go through it. If it's right now, need to add up, sprinkler system changes everything and it would be a shame to keep the building empty because as, you know, we put the money in, think we can get something out of it as an investment, as anybody else will do. And right now, it looks like it's a, you know, the way it is right now, like, you know, like it needs to stay.
Can't say that because we don't, we don't have enough information yet.
No, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Sometimes, yeah, yeah.
Because I'm more emotional because it's, you know, so much money into it and to report it and I'm not hearing a sprinkler system, so it's put it in a place where it'll be there.
Do believe this board, every applicant that comes in tries to give them the fairest, fairest chance possible to bring the information to us so that we can figure it out. And once we feel it's like, all right, we have the information and then we apply the facts to the criteria and either grant or deny the variance. So we take it to heart to give everybody the fairest chance possible for their application. It's, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns, other comments, anything you want to know other than how to do it?
Yeah.
We can't give you legal advice, but.
Understood.
I think we're trying to give you some hints on how to do it.
Certainly, I mean, I would love to work with you guys and make this possible, like I said, I've talked to Mr. McGane numerous times. So, I mean, I think we're on the same page with what your guys' needs are as far as the town of Victor and, you know, we'll get that information together and, and come back and we'll see what we come up with, you know?
All right, so the County Planning Board, are they going to hear this by?
July 3rd.
Okay, so our next meeting is July 18th. You think you're going to have the information by the 18th? If not, we can push it back another meeting, it's, it's certainly up to you.
How far is the following meeting? August 1st? I think the, I think the 1st of August would be a good, good timeframe.
And if there's a jam or some, just let us know and we can give you the time that you need, just keep us in a loop about what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And say in the meantime, learn as much as you can about getting that up to code for a three-family.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a pretty strong idea of what it's needed, you know, what it needs to get you guys up to code there and meet the regulations of the township, you know, but I've been building for 25 years, so, you know, we're, I think we'll be on the same page on that, Adam and us.
There's information out there on the criteria and what you need to show for a use variance.
Thank you.
Good, good luck to you. Thanks so much, have a good night. Anyone have any questions, concerns, comments? Adam, I've noticed, driving by the mall, the, we had a variance request for that yogurt place that's next to, at the UPS store.
The juice place, you're talking about?
Yeah, it's like a juice place or a.
Yeah.
There's those flag signs all over the place, doesn't that count as a sign? I, I think there was at least three of them as, as going down 96. I don't think they're taking them out every night. Take a look, see and see how that applies to the code.
I thought you were going to say they put back up the inflatable. The inflatable juice.
Anything for us? Oh, we're not stuck, we enjoy it. All right, I think we're all set then. Yes, Adam, you got something else?
Tropicals.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Have a great evening.